All right, so the Committee on Fiscal Planning and Management. First thing on the agenda is the minutes. Anybody willing to do a motion?
I move.
So, as you say, ever? Can we propose any extensions? Okay, the minutes are done. We have eight items on the policy agenda, and before we do that, particularly, we have a presentation.
We have two presentations, Mr. Chairman. The first presentation is going to be done by Bob Lemieux, who is the Executive Director of the Division of Facilities Planning and Management. We're very proud of this accomplishment. When I came to CUNY a couple of years ago, one of the big issues had to do with retrofitting of labs across the university. And this did not entail building new buildings. What it did entail is seeking out outdated labs and bringing them up to a modern standard. And we, about 14 months ago, selected as our first try five labs across five different campuses, and we set a very tight timeframe for ourselves. And I might add that due to the hard work of the staff, in particular Bob and David Salmon, we exceeded that timeframe. We made our timeframe and even had some time to spare. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Bob Lemieux.
Thank you, Iris. As Iris said, about 14 months ago, just when I got here, just a couple of months after Iris had been here.
You might have to speak a little louder on this.
Hopefully, this is on now. So we embarked upon a project. We identified five labs in different things. We identified instructional laboratories on these campuses: City College, Hunter College, Queens, Brooklyn, and Lehman. And we were looking for instructional labs, wet laboratories, chemistry, things with fume hoods, things with, not dry, physics labs, but these were really wet biology, chemistry, organic chemistry-type laboratories. The work that we were going to undertake included replacement of the cabinets, the sinks, the fume hoods, finished flooring, and HVAC upgrades. Some of these labs didn't have state-of-the-art HVAC systems. People should know that laboratories require once-through air. It's a very specialized HVAC system. Most spaces like this have about 75 percent recirculated air, but a laboratory has to have a one-time pass-through of the air. The work did not include replacement of any of the equipments or anything in the laboratory, but it's very specific to putting the lab together. We began this project in December of 2007. We did a consultant selection from a pre-qualified list that we had developed, took about four weeks. The bid and design process took 16 weeks, and we assumed we could do the construction in about six, which is a very aggressive schedule. The expectation was, for the beginning of the winter term, that these laboratories would be ready to be used. I will add that none of the colleges really believed us, so they didn't schedule those laboratories to be used in January, although we were ready, which I thought was interesting. The total cost of this project was about $8 million. And this is the way these labs looked before we started. This is the lab at City, Hunter, Lehman, Brooklyn. This lab has not been used in 30 years. And when we were done in January, this was the lab at City, all-new fume hoods, all-new flooring, all-new lighting. This is Lehman, Brooklyn, and Hunter. They all look very similar. They're all designed by one architect, and one CM put them all together, and we did the project in about the timeframe that we had laid out. And I think it was a very successful project. We are currently looking to do Phase Two, identifying seven science labs on seven different campuses. And the specific labs are being identified at this moment in time, and we'll start this next one, and hopefully, we'll come back next year or so and have some more to show you. But thank you.
Any questions?
Two questions. Ballpark, general estimate, what did the $8 million translate to on a dollar-per-square-foot basis? I know it's...
The laboratories are up about $1,300, $1,400 a square foot. Depends on how much HVAC work really needed to be done on a specific laboratory. Laboratories are very expensive, primarily for the infrastructure to support them, not the casework itself.
And who were the architects and CM?
The architect was Wassa. Wassa was chosen from our pre-qualified list of architects. And the CM was URS.
Thank you both.
Comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. I used to teach in one of these laboratories, the one that used at Lehman College, and I can testify how necessary this work was, because literally parts of the lab benches would collapse, did collapse, in fact, in the middle of a lab session. The only thing I can say is that this project, from beginning to end, was really exemplary in the planning and the execution. It was first-rate, and it was a good thing for this university. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I don't know if the, trust me, Phillips, if the lab was collapsing because of the vigor of the experiments you were putting in under, but certainly...
Agreed.
Certainly, this work is, we really applaud this work. It's past due, and we could not really compete in the decade of sciences without this being done, and really look forward to seeing the second phase of our operations with this, so we can continue to be state-of-the-art.
Mr. Chairman, I have another presentation to introduce. As this committee knows, we are proceeding with our new Hunter School of Social Work up in East Harlem, and we are working very well with the Brodsky Organization, as well as the architecture firm that, along with the Brodsky Organization, we selected. This is Scott Newman. He's a partner at Cooper Robertson, and I would say probably the principal architect in charge of this project. We are pretty complete with our design of the building, and we thought that this would be a great opportunity, and a great time, and a great point in this project, to bring it to the committee and share, really, all the hours of work and months of work that we have put into the project. I just want to also thank Jennifer Friedman, who's our Director of Public Private Partnerships, who's here, for all the hard work that she has put into this project. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Scott Newman.
Thank you, Iris. We actually designed the last purpose-built school for social work building, which was for Columbia University. It opened several years ago, and I think I can say clearly that this building is superior to that. These purpose-built buildings for social work education are not often built in the United States, and having an opportunity to build one ground-up that's designed specifically for this particular curriculum is rare, and this will be the finest building of social work in the nation. It's also worth mentioning that social work education is very different from other types of degree programs. These are students that are actually out doing fieldwork up to three days a week, and so they're really out in the community all the time. And their relationship with the community is really key to how the building functions, but also the expression that the architecture takes in order to really support that particular This is the site for the project. It's in East Harlem. This is Third Avenue and 119th Street. And the site is very well-located for access by public transportation. There's subway station at 126th Street and also at 125th Street, and Metro North also stops at 125th Street. And remember, this is a freestanding program that's not a part of, doesn't need a direct location or proximity to the main campus. And these students are working, and they're also doing fieldwork, so public transportation location is extremely important to them. This is the site today. It's outlined in red on the corner. The building is currently vacant. There were no residential tenants in this project, and demolition bids have been received, and I believe demolition is scheduled to start in late spring on the project. This is a neighborhood that's in transition. Typically, one finds low-rise, mixed-use buildings with commercial on the ground floor and residential on the upper stories, but there are new residential buildings, taller residential buildings, that are starting to go up in this neighborhood. And so over time, the kind of fabric that you see here will, in fact, change. Here's a view of the building, looking at the same corner, Third Avenue here and 119th Street here. The building's about 148,000 gross square feet, and it's organized on eight stories, and it's really stacked or tiered according to use. This is a building that will have a lot of interaction with the community. In fact, this is a community, East Harlem is a community that's served by the School of Social Work, and the School of Public Health will also be moving here from Brookdale. And so these are both programs that really interact with this particular community and similar communities around the city. One key feature of this building is that it was deemed to be an appropriate approach to actually reveal the activity of the building to the community, so that rather than designing this as a fortress where neighbors don't really know what's happening inside behind closed doors, the lower floors of this building are designed to be transparent, and a lot of the public activities in the building are revealed to the community. So it really engages the community. And we've organized the design so that certain areas in the building, certain elements, will actually be made available to the community, such as 166-seat lecture hall, which might be used for community board meetings, but also used for conferences, symposia, things of that sort. So really, the public activities, the more public activities are on the ground floor and the second floor, and what we've tried to do architecturally is express those activities so that they create a kind of iconic element in the building, so that people can sort of see them. They're not buried in the building. They reveal themselves to the community. The classrooms, which require a bit more privacy, are located on these floors. And then the faculty offices, which are the most private and require the most quiet, are located on the upper floors. Here's a view of the building on 119th Street. You can see this transparency, this glass wall, all along the street. We actually think of that as a kind of indoor street, and there are activities that happen behind that extended lobby, such as large conference rooms, where conferences, symposia, things of that sort would happen in addition to teaching. The library opens up off of that street, and you can see the lecture hall here. Certain spaces, again, special spaces, like the faculty lounge and student lounges, are also expressed in the facade of the building. Here's a very simple ground floor plan, 119th Street here, Third Avenue here, and the entrance is at the corner. So all of this yellow area is lobby or public space. And you can see this large indoor street that I was talking about, with a very large lobby, that acts as almost a kind of internal town square, with a tremendous monumental stair, place for encouraging interaction. There's a café in the building that's accessible to the neighborhood, as well as directly to the building. So it's a place where a student can come in, pick a cup of coffee, pick up a cup of coffee, and then come on in. And then along this indoor street, one has the library, which is in pink. These large conference rooms, there are two of them with a movable partition, so that they can increase the seating. And then this green area is Centro, which is the Puerto Rican archive. And there's a great synergy with this neighborhood, with Centro. And also, there's a gallery here, which will be a Latin American art gallery, also used by Centro. So that, also from the street, one will see the gallery, both from 119th Street, but also it's the terminus of this indoor street. Because we have a very deep site, we've put an indoor courtyard, a garden court, in the middle of the building, so that the library wraps around that garden court, and the back wall of these meeting rooms is glass, and it looks out onto that garden court. So we've been very sensitive to bring natural light into the building wherever possible. This building will comply with Executive Order 111, so it'll be LEED-certified, it'll beat the State Energy Code by 20 percent. And everywhere we can, we're looking for opportunities to bring in natural light and use sustainable design techniques. There's a model view of that lobby, the main public space, with, again, the entrance on the corner of Third Avenue here and 119th Street here. You can see how suitable that really is to activities. This large indoor street with the conference rooms back here and Centro and the gallery in the back, the café would be here. This building's also been designed to display public art, again, bring a lot of color and activity, really to activate the street life of this building, again, not make it a closed fortress-type academic building. Very quickly, taking you up that grand stair to the second floor, this is the lecture hall, 166 seats. The back wall of that is also glass, just like in the conference rooms down below, so that when there are events here, you'll be looking out into the community, and again, the community can look in and see that this is an important anchor in the community for And then these are standard classrooms. There are two floors of these. But also on this floor, we have a very large outdoor terrace. And so taken together with the lecture hall and these large lobbies, this really becomes a terrific suite of spaces for hosting events. We've put a pantry in there, so these events could be catered. You can imagine having a conference or a panel discussion in this lecture hall and coming outside to this terrace for reception afterwards. The whole building has really been designed to exploit those kinds of opportunities. Then, upper floors, again, we have two floors of state-of-the-art teaching rooms. There's a view in the back of that outdoor terrace on the second floor. You can see the library court in the middle of that. And then we get to some upper floors, where we have faculty offices and other offices. This is the fourth floor, which has faculty offices around the perimeter. They all have windows, natural light, and in large, open work areas, flexible work areas in the middle for open workstations for projects, adjuncts, gadget teaching assistants, but this area's meant to be very flexible. And then, at this end of the building on each floor, an office suite. On this particular floor, these would be student services, but on the next floor up, you would have the dean's suite for social work, and the floor above that, the dean's suite for public health. Then up in the tower portion, again, faculty offices, also seminar rooms, so that in a more quiet setting, one can have research going on and more pointed activities on this floor, less public activities on this floor. So really, that's the view from, again, from the corner, with the large lecture hall, student lounge, again, classrooms, faculty up here. We really see this project as making a tremendous statement about making an investment in this community. It's a tremendous financial investment in this community. It's also an investment in education in this community, and we hope that it's also an important investment in design excellence. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also point out that we have had an excellent relationship with the Hunter School of Social Work. The faculty and the president and the dean have all really been very much involved in the design of this space, and we've had numerous conversations with the faculty to make sure that we addressed all of their concerns and issues about the building.
Great. Any questions?
I've heard some people say that this proposed School of Public Health would be in the same facility or nearby. Is that perhaps correct?
It would be housed in this building.
In this building?
Yes.
Could we discuss where that would be? Is there some comment?
Sure.
Yeah, the, rather than assign specific floors to public health, the general classrooms and faculty offices will be mixed or blended on floors with social work faculty, so that if certain programs expand and others contract, we have that flexibility of making sure that all the offices and classrooms are utilized. On the lower level, there are a series of labs that will be specific to public health, nutrition lab, food lab, things of that sort. But the general classrooms will be mixed with social work.
We're also hoping that, you know, the social work program, as you know, runs late in the afternoon till the evening. We're hoping that we'll be able to program some public health classes earlier on in the day and then having, you know, greater usage of the building than we currently have at 79th Street.
Good. Thank you.
I just have one comment. I think you've done a great job, an excellent job, in fact, in designing a building that is really part of the DNA of the community, and that's really what we want to have, so that way, we can organically grow with the community, we can express ourselves and be a part of it as opposed to just being an interloper. So you've really done, you and your team have done a great job in ensuring that the building design, the architecture, expresses that point. So I just want to commend the team for that.
Thank you. We did present this to the community board about two weeks ago, and it was extremely well-received.
Just my, we're very pleased, because as Scott said, one of the overriding concerns we had, we didn't want a building that turned its back to the community. We wanted a building that opened itself up to the community, and we believe that Scott and his team has really captured that feeling.
Yeah, and you've gone a step, I mean, I was involved earlier as a student with the design of the Columbia Building. And so what you've done is take it a step further with this particular building. So it's good to see that, and to see that your thinking is also involved at the same time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, we have eight items on the policy agenda. We'll go through them all, and then...
And then we have some more items.
Do we need eight items with the walk-in?
No, it's a living total. Sorry.
It's a living?
Yes. It'll go quick.
There's only eight in my pocket.
Yes, it'll go quick.
Shoot.
Okay. So item number one is a resolution authorizing the design and construction for the facade of the reconstruction of the window replacement at Voorhees Hall at New York City Tech. The Voorhees Hall facade is unstable and in need of renovations. This resolution authorizes the design and construction to rebuild the facade and replace the windows. Any questions? No? Okay, I'm going on to the next one. The next item has to do with Baruch College, and it's a resolution authorizing an amendment to a prior resolution for the design of the canopy at the southwest entrance plaza of the Newman Vertical Campus. I think, as everyone in this committee knows, from the last time we brought this item, we have a problem with falling ice during the winter. It's a safety issue. We're required to put up a pedestrian bridge each winter and take it down in the spring, which is a rather costly amount. And so this amendment is going to reflect the increase in the cost of the previously approved item, and the increase is from $4.8 million to $6.4 million. And I might note that the primary reason for the increase in the cost is that the original price did not have a plan or did not select a company to erect the canopy when it was delivered. And so that's why we have the increased cost in this. Mr. Shorty, you're squipping. The reason is that this island is being, this canopy is being designed and built in Germany, and so there was no company here in the United States that they were partnered with that could have then put the canopy up. And we've now, DASNY has hired Turner Construction, who's working with the company in Germany, so once it gets here, they'll take possession and they will put the canopy up.
And that couldn't be priced out in the initial bid?
No.
Got you. No, that's all.
The third resolution is authorizing a construction contract for a new perimeter reconstruction on behalf of Queensborough Community College. The campus's perimeter is currently defined by a chain-link fencing that is in serious disrepair. This resolution will authorize the construction of a new wrought-iron perimeter fencing with modernized electronic gating, a new main entry gate with a camera security system, and new signage for the campus. The fourth item is a resolution authorizing a construction contract for the renovation of Shepherd Hall facade. For those on this committee who have seen a number of Shepherd Hall projects come before the committee, as you know, there are a series of contracts, and this is just one more in that series. But this one is going to deal with the partial historic restoration of the exterior facade, as well as the replacement of some structural steel, the bell tower ramp, windows, and new entry door for Shepherd Hall. The fifth item is a resolution authorizing the reconstruction of Fittiman Hall on behalf of the Borough of Manhattan Community College. As you know, the damage done to Fittiman Hall on 9/11 was extensive. This resolution authorizes the remediation, the deconstruction work necessary to remove the damaged building, and the programming, design, and construction work necessary to replace it with a new 390,000-square-foot building to include classrooms, computer labs, offices, a virtual library, and other much-needed space for the college. The sixth item is a resolution authorizing a construction-manager-builder contract for the renovation of the Carroll Street Building's pool facility on behalf of Medgar Everest. This pool at Medgar Everest is unable to be used in its current condition and has been closed for the last three years. By using the services, again, of a CN-build contractor, we can expedite the necessary renovations to filtration and mechanical equipment, lighting, locker rooms, code compliance, to restore an operational pool facility to the college and the community by October of 2009. The seventh item is a resolution authorizing a consultant contract for design and construction-related services for the new science building complex, Phase One, at Brooklyn College. This resolution will authorize a contract with the architectural consultants, Mitchell Jergel, who will provide the design for this new state-of-the-art kitchen facility, as well as construction support services during the construction phase of this project. And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank both the Brooklyn College community, who served on the committee, as well as my staff, in terms of going through an RFP process, and we're very pleased that this firm was selected. The eighth item is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction-manager-builder contract for the new Performing Arts Center at Gershom Hall on behalf of Brooklyn College. The new Performing Arts Center at Brooklyn College will be built on the site of the existing Gershom Hall wing, facilities that have outlived their usefulness to the college. This resolution will authorize a contract with Hill International to demolish Gershom Hall and to provide construction and management services necessary for building the new Performing Arts Center. The next three items, Mr. Chairman, are leasing agreements for the university. The first resolution is authorizing a lease arrangement...
At the bottom of your plan, at the bottom? Yes. It says revise the agenda for meeting.
You got it? Okay.
Yep.
Authorizing a lease arrangement agreement at 16 Court Street, Brooklyn, on behalf of CUNY Central Administration. The building at 16 Court Street provides ready-to-use, pre-built office space that can accommodate the pressing space needs of the offices of Academic Affairs and New Resources Management on a short-term basis until permanent quarters can be made ready by the university. The lease will be for three years. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement at the C&amp;D Building, Bellevue Hospital, New York. CUNY and NYU are partnering on the state-of-the-art Medical Simulation Center, with significant focus on first responder and emergency management training. Facilities to house this center have been identified at Bellevue Hospital's C&amp;D Building at 462 First Avenue. CUNY will lease these facilities from Bellevue and then execute a sublease of these facilities to NYU for purposes of constructing this new simulation facility. And the last item is a resolution to authorize... And the last item is a resolution to authorize a renewal lease agreement at 555 West 57th Street on behalf of CUNY Central Office. Since 1974, CUNY has occupied several floors, floors 10 through 12 and 14 through 16, at West 57th Street to provide administrative office and data space to the Central Office staff. This current fifteen-year lease is due to expire on July 2010, and this resolution seeks authorization to renew the current lease for an additional twenty years and to modify its terms to include additional space on the 13th floor. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have any questions on any of the eleven motions?
This is really an important day for CUNY. All of these items are important, but of course, the reconstruction of Fittiman Hall is particularly important. I'd like to congratulate Bartson to Lanzel for the energy that you and your staff are putting into these projects. This university really needed renewal, getting renewal, getting what it really needed. Congratulations. I have a detailed question about item B10. This simulation center will be available to the faculty in which campuses? Do we know that, or is that projected?
It's going to be available to all the faculty that would choose to use it. I know that another simulation lab is being constructed in the Bronx by another hospital association, so if the faculty would prefer to use that as opposed to this, that would be okay too, but it's available to all faculty at the university.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, can we give a motion on the eleven items?
Second.
Second. Will those be paid?
Aye.
Any votes? Any extensions? Here are all moved. Do we get a motion for John?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.